We'll go ahead and call the meeting to order, and as we always do, if we'd stand with the Pledge of Allegiance, that'd be great.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, as we start off, or have over several months now, started our meeting out, let's just take a moment of silence with the issues and stuff going on in Ukraine. Just recognize not only the Ukrainians that are being displaced by the millions, but also the Russians that are fighting that probably don't even want to be there, so take a moment. Okay, well, we will start off with roll call, Madam Clerk.
Mayor Pape.
Here.
Councilmember Chaveta.
Here.
Councilmember Hands.
Here.
Councilmember Caudill.
Here.
Councilmember Leahy.
Here.
Councilmember Neal.
Can you hear us, Councilmember Neal? He's on the phone.
Councilmember Ryder, I'll call him.
Here.
Thank you.
Councilmember Silvers.
Here.
Councilmember Yodrich.
Here.
Okay, thank you, and Clerk, we'll see if we can't get Councilmember Neal back online. He is calling in this evening from a remote location. First item is public items. Members of the public are encouraged to use this time to make comments about matters that do not appear on the agenda. Comments about items on the regular agenda will be taken as each item is considered. Please note individuals making public comments will be limited to five minutes. In accordance with governing body rules, we reserve the right to refuse public comments that are personal, impertinent, or slanderous. Madam Clerk, did we have the sheet brought in yet? Okay, thank you, sorry, I should have noticed that earlier. I do think that, Mr. Crone, I think you do have a comment you'd like to make if you want to go on one up. I know you're on the list, so.
Thank you, and a long list it is today. Good evening, councilman, Mr. Mayor. I come to you this evening from our beautiful Merriam home at 6633 Wed Street. Not a year has gone by that I haven't heard from my neighbors who loathe the eyesore that the old vacant Kmart building has become, and I know, I'm confident that you guys have gotten just as much feedback in your time on council. Kmart even met the legal definition of blight in Kansas in a recent official study. In the work session last month, council brainstormed what its ask would be in exchange for the TIF money the developer requested. Conversation centered around green initiatives, though nothing exact was settled on, nothing precise. And environmental stuff is great, but some green certifications are a little picky. One of the criteria I actually read in the well-building standard requires digital indicators for outdoor air quality at every window, every operable window, so residents would know when to open the windows. I don't need to go into, articulate how that is kind of a little overboard. I think that demanding green investments for TIF is unnecessary because useful green technologies attract tenants. Wasting energy is costly, so the market will guide the developer to adopt green technologies regardless if we require them via TIF. Twenty-five million dollars is a heck of a card to play. I've reached out to my neighbors, and I have ideas of my own and theirs, which I'd like to share with you tonight. Let's use this negotiation to fix the actual problem that has plagued us for nearly ten years: blighted vacant commercial property. I wasn't around in 1968. When the Kmart shopping center was developed originally, the plans may have been just as grand as the Grand Station is now, but as they always do, times changed, and Kmart went away, and nearly a decade later, we're left with a mess in our city. I don't expect that to happen any day soon with Grand Station, but we have the power to use these negotiations to assure that it never will. We can guarantee ongoing prosperity at that site in Merriam. I propose a binding covenant on each building in the project, a covenant that if it become blighted again by Kansas standards, that the owner must restore that building's site to grass at their cost or give it to the city for a dollar. This should be an easy pill to swallow. I know the developer has every intention to bring successful businesses, and as long as they continue to operate in any form, then they have nothing to worry about. But this covenant would make sure we don't need TIF money to recover the site in the future, as we do today. Additional proposals from my neighbors include a commitment from the developer and its tenants to participate in Merriam's local schools, sponsoring events, buying equipment, buying uniforms for sports teams, for example. I think this idea is particularly good, as TIF districts themselves divert tax money away from, divert the increment away from local school districts in the first place. So it would be quite appropriate for the benefactors of TIF to give back to our community schools in this way, I think. Another idea from a neighbor, based on our uniquely high pull factor of 4.79, was for the business complex and its tenants to offer discounts and incentives to Merriam residents, given that many of their customers will be coming from outside the city anyway. What kinds of offers could these new businesses provide to customers with proof of Merriam residency? And lastly, from a neighbor, Merriam's residents and businesses have a great diversity in resources, skills, and trades. We could require that developers hire local engineers, architects, and contractors to build this project, or at least heavily weight the locality of contractors and expenses. Merriam, of course, has a number of lumberyard, stone, concrete suppliers, HVAC, and electrical, and we want these projects and the money that they bring, the money that they use and that they bring to stay in the city. This idea and the others would all be great, would all be great ways for Merriam Grand Station to give back to the Merriam community directly and from the beginning. You know how to reach me. I'd be honored to be a resource for you and staff as staff negotiate the best deal for our Merriam neighbors. Please use your voices, councilpersons, to direct negotiations to include benefits like these to our community in exchange for the TIF funding the developers requesting. And finally, on another note, the curb and gutter project in Timber Ridge, which began May 2nd, has been progressing nicely, despite two rainstorms, are doing great work. They were actually able to add a little temporary plate for a couple families who happened to be moving that same, during the project day after they had dug out the curbs, but they took care of our neighborhood, and we're very happy, so, thank you from Timber Ridge.
Thank you, Mr. Crone. Okay, is there anyone else that would like to speak at the public meeting? Somebody rushing to the podium, so we will close out public items and go to our consent agenda. Considering we only have one item on the consent agenda, I will not ask if anybody wants to pull anything, or we wouldn't be talking about anything, but I will ask if there are any questions or changes or anything that anyone would like to address. If not, I'll entertain a motion. Mr. Silvers.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to consider approval of the minutes of the April 21st, sorry, 25th, 2022 city council meeting.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. Ms. Hands.
I have one second, Pat.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Chaveta.
Aye.
Councilmember Hands.
Aye.
Councilmember Caudill.
Aye.
Councilmember Leahy.
Aye.
Councilmember Neal. Councilmember Ryder.
Aye.
Councilmember Silvers.
Aye.
Councilmember Yodrich.
Aye.
Motion passes eight zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Moving on to the next item is the mayor's report. We're happy to have a couple proclamations that we get to have this evening. One is a Public Works proclamation, so this is for Director McDonald and all of his fine staff. This proclamation says, "Whereas public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities and to the public health, high quality of life, and well-being of the people of the city of Merriam, and whereas these infrastructures, facilities, and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals who are federally mandated first responders and the engineers, managers, and employees at all levels of government and the private sector, who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, solid waste systems, public buildings, and other structures and facilities essential for our citizens. And whereas it is the public interest for the citizens, civic leaders, and children in the city of Merriam to gain knowledge of and to maintain an ongoing interest and understanding of the importance of public works and public works programs in their respective communities, and whereas the year 2022 marks the 62nd Annual National Public Works Week, sponsored by the American Public Works Association and Canadian Public Works Association. Now therefore, I, Bob Pape, by the virtue of the authority vested in me as the mayor of Merriam, Kansas, do hereby proclaim May 15th through the 22nd, 2022, as National Public Works Week in the city of Merriam, and I urge all citizens to join the representatives of the American Public Works Association and government agencies and activities, events, and ceremonies designed to pay tribute to our public works professionals, engineers, managers, and employees, and to recognize the substantial contributions they make to protecting our national health, safety, and quality of life. Proclaim this ninth day of May, 2022." There you go. Thank you, Jim. And I actually get a second proclamation. I've been really busy this month. Okay. Thank you. Julie, for these. Okay, designating the month of May, 2022, as Bike Month in the city of Merriam, Kansas. Whereas Bike Month was established as a national celebration in 1956 and is supported by the League of American Bicyclists, and whereas the designation is meant to showcase the many benefits of bicycling and encourage more people to give biking a try, and whereas May is also the time of year for people to celebrate Bike to Work Week from May 16th to May 22nd, 2022, as well as Bike to Work Day on May 20th, 2022, and whereas bicycling offers an opportunity to invest in more equitable access to key resources for communities and households without a car, and whereas investing in connected and protected bike lanes and related facilities can be beneficial for local businesses, and whereas the emergence of electric-assist bicycles and cargo bicycles has vastly expanded the possibilities of bicycling as a utilitarian form of transportation, and whereas the city of Merriam has accepted bike, has an accepted bike pedestrian plan. Now therefore, I, Bob Pape, by the virtue of the authority vested in me as the mayor of Merriam, Kansas, do hereby proclaim the month of May, 2022, as Bike Month in the city of Merriam. Proclaim this ninth day of May, 2022." Okay, and I'll leave those for the... Yeah. Should pick those up later. Okay, thank you. Okay, before we move on to other things from the mayor's report, I would like to just mention that our Flags for Freedom group is going to be repairing flags tomorrow down at the Public Works facility at 10:00 a.m., and if anybody in the audience, or you know anybody that would like to come and make repairs to flags in preparation for July 4th celebration itself, please show up down there. You're just invited, and I'm not saying that we're going to have donuts or water or anything, but you're, we could definitely use the help, so, that being said. All right, other things, I think we're ready for council items. First one up, I guess Director Dyer is going to come forward and talk to us about a resolution setting the date for a public hearing.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. Brian Dyer, Community Development Director. This evening, procedural resolution this evening, as we're moving towards the Kmart redevelopment project, the Merriam Grand Station being on your all's agenda, we're trying to move all the different pieces of that puzzle to be on your agenda on your, for June 27th. So this, this evening, is setting the date for the public hearing for the project plan, for Project Plan M is in Mary. That's the TIF side of things, not the planning side of things, the TIF side of things. So up on your screen, you have the map. Again, the hash lines are the TIF district area. Project M is the shaded area in here, excluding the Freddies and the Krispy Kreme. As you recall, your last meeting, you passed an ordinance removing these two general areas from the TIF district as well, so now Project M is covering just the gray areas. As part of the state statute requirements, your planning commission on their May 4th meeting had made a finding that the project plan is consistent with the intent of the Merriam Comprehensive Plan for the Development of the City, so the next step in this process is for you all to pass a resolution to establish June 27th as the date for the public hearing on the project plan. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that the council may have.
Does anyone have any questions for Director Dyer? I don't hear the, for Mr. Neal. Okay, I would entertain a motion. Ms. Hands.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the council approve a resolution setting June 27th, 2022, as the date for the public hearing to consider shotting Mission Parkway and Antioch Road, the southwest corner, also known as Area M redevelopment project plan.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. Ms. Yoder.
Mr. Mayor, a second.
Okay, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Hands.
Aye.
Councilmember Caudill.
Aye.
Councilmember Leahy.
Aye.
Councilmember Neal.
Aye.
Councilmember Ryder.
Aye.
Councilmember Silvers.
Aye.
Councilmember Yodrich.
Aye.
Councilmember Chaveta.
Aye.
Motion passes eight zero.
Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk. Looks like our next item concerns Chief Deener, reference to a tenure license agreement.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Johnson County Med Act is the ambulance service, third-party ambulance service that has resources, ambulances, and staff strategically located throughout the county, including four or five Overland Park fire stations in other cities. Merriam has had an agreement within various forms throughout probably the last five decades since Merriam, or Med Act has come into existence, the last one ending in 2020, and with new leadership with Johnson County Med Act, the intention was to have something more than a handshake agreement with all facilities in the county, giving stability to both sides. It allows them to know they can put resources and personnel in a location and have solid ground that, you know, they have a certain term that they can do what they need to do. So upstairs, if you're familiar with the fire, look at the front of the fire station, on the far west side is a bay that's dedicated to Johnson County Med Act with individual sleeping quarters that is, really, there's no change to what specific square footage that is allocated to them, there has been no change with that. With their lease agreement, however, what they park in there may change over the years. Currently, there is an SUV with leadership, a battalion chief, that serves this part of the county. They very well could transition that to an ambulance with two personnel, all of which would be included within the footprint that is shown in the exhibit with the packet. The hope was to come up with a tenure agreement and would look to cover the operating costs and capital costs associated with the tenure window. So we have been working with Caleb with facilities to identify all the costs associated with the fire station: heating, cooling, cutting the grass, you know, any kind of snow removal, pest control, all of those types of things, and also was intending to make sure that we didn't have different contractors coming in. So making sure included in that rent would be new ceiling tiles, new carpet, new paint when it's needed, and those types of things. So for over a year, we've been discussing what the parameters of that would look like. We have shared this with Ryan as far as the lease agreement goes. IT has been involved because IT will have resources plugged in for the county services and making sure everything is squared away. So our intention was to identify and confirm their square footage that was dedicated, identify the square footage that is shared spaces: kitchen areas, day rooms, bathrooms, those types of things, and the costs associated with that. So there is a spreadsheet included within the packet that aims to kind of articulate what those costs and expenses would be over a 10-year period, what those annual costs would be with inflation. Johnson County Med Act would prefer to determine a net present value and pay a check, a lump sum upfront, and that is what they're recommending in what we're talking about here. So procedurally, we're requesting that you approve this agreement. Once this is completed, Overland Park is putting their stations through in June, and as typically in our works with the county, we go first, and then sometime this summer, those agreements would be taken to the Board of County Commissioners, who is the overseer for Johnson County Med Act, and get approval of that. So the dates of when you'd get the check, that is to be determined, but I'm here to answer any questions in regards to the concept, the square footage, the numbers, anything associated with that.
Does anyone have any questions for Chief Deener? Okay, well, it looks like you explained it well, Chief.
I appreciate it.
Okay, good job. Well, with that, then, I would entertain a motion to accept this agreement. Okay, Councilmember Yodrich.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the council approve a tenure license agreement between the city of Merriam and the Board of County Commissioners of Johnson County.
Okay, do I have a second? Mr. Silvers.
I second that.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Caudill. Councilmember Leahy.
Aye.
Councilmember Neal. Councilmember Ryder.
Aye.
Councilmember Silvers.
Aye.
Councilmember Yodrich.
Aye.
Councilmember Chaveta.
Aye.
Councilmember Hands.
Aye.
Motion passes eight zero.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Chief.
Mayor, I would like to just thank the chief and his staff, and Caleb, and Public Works, our facilities manager. It has been a year negotiation to figure out how to get this done and how to kind of extract the area that they have up there and figure out how to make sure that we're justly compensated for the part of that facility that they're using. So I do appreciate the chief and his staff and Caleb. It's been, it's been an undertaking.
Thank you, I agree. You got a lot more out of them than I ever did, so, good job. And if you need to leave, Chief, I understand you have another meeting, feel free to be dismissed. Yeah, thank you for attending this evening. Okay. Okay, well, moving on, it looks like our next item is a May CIP update. Okay, Director McDonald is here to update us for the CIP.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor and council. Tonight, I have your May CIP update. There's a few things that have changed since I turned this memo in last week. Staff held a pre-construction meeting with Miles Escavation on May 5th for the West Frontage Road project from 75th Street to the Roundabout. The current start date has been moved to June 13th. This project has a substantial completion date of November 18th. The BHC is finishing up on the design for the 55th Street project from Merriam Drive to West City Limits. We currently have received 22 of the 35 temporary construction easements. We have 10 that have not signed or committed to sign, seven of those we are currently in active discussions with. The remaining three are rental units and have yet to respond. Kansas Gas is in the process of replacing the gas main and service lines from Farley to Knox, and Evergy is in the process of obtaining utility easements for the relocation of their overhead power lines and poles. Our Mill and Overlay project, Phoenix Concrete, has started the, replacing the curbs in Timber Ridge Villas and Hocker Drive. The streets included in the program are Hocker Drive, Farley Street from 55th Street to 57th Street, 57th Street, Wed Place, Wed Street, 66 Terrace, which is in Timber Ridge Villas. And last but not least is the Merriam Drive street improvements, which is Johnson Drive to 55th Street. BHC is currently working on the design for that project. We anticipate having some utility meetings shortly. That's all I have, if you've got any questions.
I have a question concerning the Evergy's having to get easements as well. Do they have a condemnation process or something, I mean, if they don't get it, if somebody doesn't give Evergy a...
It's similar to our process. They go out and make offers, and they just keep proceeding along, so.
Okay, so potentially that could hold up our project too, then, if they don't expedite their portion of that.
Correct, yes.
Does anyone else have questions for Director Dyer, or for Director McDonald, excuse me? Okay, okay, thank you, thank you, Jim. Okay, let's see. Well, the next item looks like is an approval of a resolution, and it looks like Mr. Engle's going to tackle that one.
It is. Thank you, Mayor, council, good evening. This is really a follow-up to some of what Jim was just sharing on 55th Street. The 55th Street project is a rehab project. Scope of work includes a replacement curb and gutter, two-inch mill and overlay, bike lane sidewalks, about $2.6 million project. Utilities are on-site, as Jim had mentioned. This project's been in the CIP for a number of years, and we need to move the project forward. We are in the process of trying to acquire easements. As Jim shared, we do have some additional easements that we've acquired since I think the packet went out, but we have 22 of 35 easements. We need, we will continue to negotiate in good faith and do our due diligence to try to find some sort of middle ground to acquire the rest of those, although some of them are folks that just aren't local, so we can't even, we don't even know necessarily where they're at. But we do need to move the project forward. To when we acquire on these larger projects easements, we generally will get outside counsel for the right-of-way to help us, so we acquired Mr. Oric from Oric and Erskine LLP to be our right-of-way counsel. Their process is to send several mailings, to go out on-site, to knock doors, walk the neighborhoods, leave cards inside doors or in the mailboxes, try to make contact with the folks that live in some of these houses to make a connection with them, and they thus far have not been able to do that with 10 properties. They are recommending to keep this project on staff. We move forward with the condemnation process. The condemnation process is for three or four different steps. Any one of those has an off-ramp before we actually get to the final part of it. That process is the adoption of a resolution, a survey of the property, adopting an ordinance, I'm sorry, adopt a resolution, conduct a survey, adopt an ordinance, and then the filing of the petition. As we continue to negotiate through this process, we may not have to continue that with every single one of these, but we might have one or two that we have to go all the way through the process for, through. So this is the first step, the declaring that the project is necessary and to call for a survey on those 10, yeah, those 10 properties. Happy to answer any questions or...
Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Engle? Okay, see, no questions, hear nothing from Mr. Neal. I would entertain a motion, then, to move forward. Ms. Hands.
I move that the council approve the resolution declaring the necessity and authorizing a survey with descriptions of land for the 55th Street project from Schweitzer to Merriam Drive.
Okay, and Ms. Yoder.
Mr. Mayor, a second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Leahy.
Aye.
Councilmember Neal. Councilmember Ryder. Councilmember Silvers.
Aye.
Councilmember Yodrich. Councilmember Chaveta.
Aye.
Councilmember Hands.
Aye.
Councilmember Caudill.
Aye.
Motion passes eight zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Okay, before we move on, we have, well, the other is an informational item, but we have, we do have Director Slocum in the audience. Does he might have any questions concerning the park and rec boards minutes that were passed out earlier? Okay, I guess we don't need you, Director Slocum. We need you, but we just don't need you to speak. Thank you. Okay, anything else, Mr. Engle, before we move into the next section?
Just as an informational item, Turkey Creek Festival is Saturday, May 21st. I believe we still need some volunteers. Tell your friends, even if they don't want to volunteer, come out and enjoy our first Turkey Creek Festival in three years? Three years. That's all, happy to answer any questions anybody has.
Any additional questions from Mr. Engle? Okay, well, we'll just move right along. We do have an executive session this evening in which we will need to, well, make a motion to that we...
Could you tell me about how much time you think we're going to need?
I'm thinking we can get done in 20 minutes. If not, I guess we can always come back in, but it should be, yeah, we may need more time, but let's try for 20. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I make a...
Yes, please go ahead.
I move that the governing body recess into executive session to discuss the city administrator's annual review pursuant to KSA 75-4319B1, which allows the city council to recess into executive session to discuss personnel matters of non-elected personnel. President will be the governing body and city attorney. The meeting will convene in the council chambers at 7:50.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second? Oh, okay. Yeah.
I second.
Go ahead, Ms. Ryder. Okay.
She did.
She did.
Okay, we have a motion and a second.
We have a motion, a second, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Councilmember Neal. Councilmember Ryder.
Aye.
Councilmember Silvers.
Aye.
Councilmember Yodrich. Councilmember Yodrich.
Aye.
Councilmember Chaveta.
Aye.
Councilmember Hands.
Aye.
Councilmember Caudal.
Aye.
Councilmember Leahy.
Aye.
Motion passes eight zero.
Okay, well, we will be back in 20 minutes. All right, at this point, are we at our allotted timeframe, Madam Clerk? We're good?
We are good.
Okay, well, then, obviously, we're reconvening, and I will entertain a motion for adjournment.
Mr. Mayor, I move we adjourn.
We have a motion, and Ms. Yoder.
Mr. Mayor, second.
We have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk.
All in favor.
Aye.
Meeting's adjourned.